If you want to sit down. All righty. So if y'all please rise with me, I'll open this up in prayer. Dear Lord, just thank you for all the many blessings you give in our town. We just give you all the praise and glory for everything you do. Be with our men and women who protect us here in Stallings and overseas and everywhere. Just be with them, let them know that you're protecting them and got your arms around them. Be with the council tonight and do what we feel like is best for the town and our citizens. And so everything we do and say, I give you all the praise and glory. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, first up is public comments. So if you didn't sign up, you know, we have the signup sheets back there for any, you can. The. All right, first up is Ms. Constance Kuno. So if you can come up and give us your name and your address, and you got three minutes, tell us what you think.
Okay. Ms. Constance Kuno.
Wait a minute, can you pull that mic up? Somebody pull it down so that we can get you recorded. Thank you.
I'm Constance Kuno, 9502 Inishmore Court Matthews in the Shanamara development. I wish to respectfully request a new current traffic study with this new Cambridge Hill development planned on Idlewild and Stevens Mill Road. Rush hour is gridlocked now without the new five planned developments. And with Cambridge Hill, it's like six. And it would only be magnified with another development. Regarding the buffer zone, I respectfully request a brick wall instead of a fence. A brick wall is more in character with the style of the homes in Shanamara, and it would be keeping in with the continuity of the whole neighborhood. And lastly, I respectfully request the town council to vote no for the general rezoning application of the one home. A conditional rezoning would be more beneficial for the town's residents. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kuno. Is there any seats available? We got, we got a couple people looking for a seat. Think I'll bring in some chairs. All right, next up is Mr. Tom Twitchell.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. Tom Twitchell, 910 Bailey Court. Initially, when I was coming here tonight, it was to ask you to consider not approving or postponing the MU2 zoning to give you more time to consider. I want to echo what the last person who spoke said. I really think that a postponement and having a new TIA, a traffic impact analysis conducted, could end up being very beneficial to everybody on the council as well as the residents in town. Recently, we've received a number of communications from various folks, including the developer's legal representation, where they gave a list regarding the concessions they were willing to agree to, predicated on approval to the rezoning to MU2. Making it contingent, though, on the zoning approval feels a little more like quid pro quo than goodwill. But nevertheless, that brings us to where we are right now. Since how the developer stands is clear and what some of the limitations may be for what the town council can and cannot do, we wanted to make sure that some important considerations that may not be getting all attention would have an opportunity to be addressed again. The Alexander property, which is right next to the area that the developer is going to be working on, is likely that it'll be closed on and that will become part of their property as well. It is immediately adjacent to the Shanamara clubhouse and pool, specifically the kiddie pool for young ones. And again, we think that TIA would be very important to have conducted because it would be important to know what the traffic velocity and count in that new entrance would be, particularly when it's next to a toddler pool. The developer conditionally agreed to a seven-foot, possibly an eight-foot fence along the common border between Shanamara residence and the proposed center. And we again wanted to state that a solid eight-foot wall, eight feet in height, made of brick, stone, or stamped concrete would provide a lot more safety and security, specifically less easily, less easy to scale, and taking an access point for undesirable elements getting into our community from the retail center, creating a barrier that would make it more difficult for them to do that. The developer also had a conditional agreement to install a type B buffer, enhancing it at certain points where trees would be removed to a type A buffer. We still believe that it's important, as it was supported in a planning board meeting, that a type A buffer is warranted and is within town ordinance. The developer's items of concession, there isn't any mention of providing the same kind of screening and protection for the Shanamara amenities, and I think that does need to be mentioned. While the developer has reduced the list of accepted use, i.e. tenants, to the center, we think that there are other tenants or prospective uses in the center that should be included in the list not to be accepted. And that would be vaping shops, dispensaries, i.e. cannabis, gaming parlors, or tenants that might use outdoor live music. And the developer also agreed to 160-foot setback to relocate the garbage containers. And I would just raise the issue, why not just have the garbage containers, the dumpsters relocated to the outside perimeter of the development, completely distanced from any of the residences at all along the border? Having said all that, I would like to introduce a consideration. It's, it feels to me, I may not have that support from everybody in the, in the room tonight, but it feels to me that it's likely that the town may move to approve that, that zoning. And if that does happen, the, the thing that I want to present is that by right development doesn't necessarily mean that it is right. It's a technical term for the, the legal process of them acquiring that land and what they're entitled to do, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's the right thing to do. And there is an opportunity for not only the developer, whether it's tonight or shortly afterward, to do some things that we deem to be right or fair or appropriate for the residents. It's also an opportunity for the council to do whatever's within their power to make that happen. And one thing that I'd like to suggest that has not been mentioned before. The developer has said in numerous different discussions that the barrier to doing an eight-foot wall along the entire perimeter that is made from stone or brick or similar substance, or doing a type A buffer with the highest opacity rating that the town ordinance contains, is really a matter of dollars and cents for them. So in that context, I would want to implore the council that if you do end up approving the zoning, that you would put in motion whatever steps are necessary to take to arrange for the town to fill in or subsidize the monies necessary to make those things happen, in addition to what the developer intends to do. Meaning that, at the end of the day, the town and the residents in Shanamara get that eight-foot brick wall and the type A buffer that's been asked for. Ultimately, at the end of today, I think everybody's looking for a resolution that ends up being good for the, for the majority of the folks. Appreciate the fact that you all have a difficult decision to make and that you don't have an opportunity to always make the decision that you would necessarily feel is most expedient or your own personal choice. But I want to weigh on each one of you to think about the lives that you will impact and to the developer to think that whatever is erected or not erected will be a living testimonial to their intent for how to become a neighbor in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next up, Ms. Jeanne Lindsey. Sir, there's a chair right over here if you want to sit down. You're okay, all right?
Thank you, done sitting all day.
All right.
Hello, Mayor and Town Council. Thanks for taking our comments. I agree with my neighbors that have already spoken. And I would like to add that these homes along Stevens Mill, when we talk about the history as we typically do in these presentations, the homes along Stevens Mill were rezoned inappropriately and unethically without the knowledge of the existing taxpaying homeowners. So the property rights of the Steven Village developers are ill-gained in the first place, especially considering one of them was on the steering committee for those documents that accomplished that rezoning. This effective, effective eminent domain is not protecting existing neighborhoods. I really can't imagine the shock of that realization on the homeowners whose homes predate those in Shanamara. But I do remember when the Duncan's home and others were rolled back to single family, and when they stood here and said that they liked their neighbors and wanted to remain in their homes. The developer's recent comments about acquiring land as each of the homeowners just got to the point they wanted to sell really doesn't seem to paint the full picture. Who wouldn't be at, who wouldn't be at the point of wanting to sell when a commercial site plan wraps around their home? Or now, in the case of the Alexander's home, a commercial driveway is planned within feet of their mixed-use zoning, zoned home because the zoning allows for minimal setback? Never mind that folks are still living there, still unaware as of December of the recent life-altering changes, maybe, I don't know if any of them are here to speak to that tonight. The developers have stated in their neighborhood meetings and in writing with the new draft of the voluntary agreements that their amendments are, quote, "subject to approval of the proposed general rezoning." I feel it's inappropriate to issue a threat of abandoning their agreement if an extra parcel is not rezoned in their favor. I do appreciate, I do not appreciate yet another threat from their team, including those from the Stinson Farms development process a few years ago, being used to undermine the town's legislative authority, which should take the public interest into account. I don't feel it's appropriate to try and hold the town to, to this condition when they themselves have chosen not to apply for a conditional rezoning and be subject to worthwhile conditions of the town. As a reminder, the state has recently restricted towns from being able to downzone back to lower density. So this decision obviously affects not just this current applicant, but any future applicants if they sell. And that includes, of course, the old ordinances of 150 allowable uses if they decide to keep the property, but their grocery store anchor falls through. In that case, low rent is better than no rent, as we've already seen where the pharmacy became a goodwill near the Harris Teeter, which is owned by the same developer, development team. So I would like to see the town deny the rezoning on the grounds that it does not serve the public interest, especially in terms of the traffic analysis, which used numbers from the state's general growth prediction instead of our local overdevelopment. And also the proposed location of the stoplight, but also in terms of protecting the existing neighborhood of Shanamara. The developers would then have the opportunity to reapply in a few months with another general rezoning, during which time hopefully more information would be gained about the traffic study calculation formula. Or the developers could apply for a conditional rezoning, which would give the town an opportunity to know exactly what level of density they're voting for. As you guys know, the CZ application would include site quoting, site plan, landscape plans, building elevations, and other such information required to provide the approving bodies with complete and accurate description of the proposed development. I think that would be much more appropriate in this case. Given that this is the last large property in our very small town, it's the gateway to 485. It's going to be inviting even more traffic with directional signs from the freeway. So I know that the council, that the conditional rezoning cannot be forced, but a general rezoning can certainly be, be denied. Otherwise, why have a rezoning process at all? Either type of rezoning leaves the local residents with binding by right uses or conditions for current and future landowners at this location. Even if a conditional rezoning only achieves conditions for just the Duncan property, it seems like that would be worthwhile to have a say for the traffic improvements. And in conclusion, David Owens from the UNC School of Government makes a comparison to a development agreement by saying, "Much like rezoning, the issue is whether or not proposed agreement is in the best public interest for the community, not whether predetermined standards for approval have been met." So I again request a no vote for this rezoning at this time for the best interest of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Public comments is the time you can speak on any topic. Does anybody else not sign in that would like to speak? Oh, there's your form. You can just give it to me. Thank you, sir. All righty, Mr. John Foltz.
Yes.
So just your name and address, please.
Yes, John Foltz. Address is 5386 Shanamara Drive in Stallings. Wanted to specifically ask the council tonight to, to deny this request to rezone in a mixed-use two application for this house. If you look at simply the, the design of Stallings, it's supposed to be a small-town feel. We don't get that if we have a fence between Shanamara and this new development. We don't get that if we have a lot of traffic backing up our neighborhood, all, all the way back to where kids are playing in our pool. We don't get that if we have crime that could easily be scaled over that fence. We don't get that with the noise and the smell from those dumpsters being cleaned. We don't get that if we have a dispensary or a vape shop in that, in that, in that neighborhood shopping center. We are interested in having commerce. We will, will be some of the clientele that will be specifically going to the shopping center. But we want it done right. So we, we please implore you, please, please say no to this. Please, please deny their request. Please allow them to continue on when they go and study the traffic, when they understand the best way to solve the bottlenecks that we have around our, our entrance between Stevens Mill and Idlewild Road and 5:00 traffic. Or when we have it, the, the school buses backed up and everybody leaving to go to 485 in the morning. So we ask at that point that you additionally approve, so that you have the same capability to help us create that small-town feel and keep a hold of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else? All righty. There we go. Make sure I got everybody. Okay, that'll close our public comments. We've got a consent agenda here. Everybody has the, the items in front of them. Does anybody need any explanation from staff on any of them? All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, motion by Mr. Ayers. Second by Laurie, all in favor? All right, as have it, thank you. Reports, I don't have anything. Laurie, you have anything tonight?
Just for the historic, historical committee. They've been working very hard on the 50th anniversary. They got a lot of events coming up along with the recreation department. And there, there's going to be a new sign in the, in Stallings Park, like a plaque, a big plaque, talking about the history of the park and how it started and, you know, just the, the basic history. I don't remember all the stuff that's on there, but events that used to take place before we were even a town.
As she's talking about, it's the 50th anniversary of the town of Stallings developed in 1975, so Incorporated. So it'll be a celebration over in the town park later in the year. Thank you, Laurie. Stephen?
No, sir.
David?
None of this, none of this, sir.
Alex, you got anything for us tonight, other than your scoreboard, scorecard later on?
Thank you, Mayor. Several things from staff in addition to the strategic action plan and the ballot scorecard, which we'll tackle later. The first thing is we, as we do every month, we've engendered a budget line item transfers list. This is intra-department. And we do this and submit it to y'all for the spirit of transparency. Also, as I mentioned before, myself and Chief Franks went and met with groups of third graders this morning for Career Day and really enjoyed that. I think the future is bright with our youngest generation. And finally, Mr. Coffey, do you mind giving a, a parks update, sir?
Good evening. Just want to give an update on the first big event celebrating the 50th anniversary coming up this Friday. The Sham Rockin' Concert will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 right across the street at the band show. Chris Taylor and The Rumor will be performing. We'll also have food and drink vendors from the Smashed Patty, Cabuto on Wheels, Armored Cow Brewing Company, as well as Americana Beer Company. And wanted to update you on two projects that are going on right now, or scheduled to begin soon. Bars Recreation is scheduled to begin the new playground construction on March 31st. We anticipate this project taking about three weeks, if weather cooperates, hoping for an April or early May ribbon cutting. And then this, this morning, actually, Blue Ridge Trail Works began the work on our disc golf course at Blair Mill Park, putting in new tee pads, moving some existing pads to their new locations and making other course upgrades. We expect that to finish sometime in April as well for another grand opening ceremony, a grand reopening. That's it.
All right, thank you.
One question. What genre is the music this Friday?
I believe they just do covers from all sorts, but I think mostly like classic rock.
All right. All right, that's all right. Anything else, Alex, from you?
No, sir. That concludes staff report.
Chief, you have anything for us tonight?
We're hosting a fraud prevention course for the Ambran neighborhood next week down off of Chestnut.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, I do have one thing I forgot to say. I mentioned it earlier, and the thing is, everybody got their new tax value in the mail this week. Let you know the appeals process is already open. March 5th it opened up. I've already appealed mine. I did it, yeah, I did a survey of about 20 to 25 homes around my house. They were similar size, built the same time. And my rate went up 70%. Some of those went up 17%. So what's the, why the big difference? I don't know. So I'll find out in the appeals process. But then, so I recommend everybody do the same thing and analyze it. The third thing I did was, after I did all that analysis, then I went to Zillow. Zillow's, it's their job to have fair market value. That's their job. They're a multi-billion dollar company. And on that form from, on the appeal, they ask, what, what do you think the value is? So I put that number in there, and Zillow had it within $2,000 of what I thought it should be. So I recommend everybody doing that. You know, it might, it might hurt you conversely, but in my case, I'm looking for a reduction. So that's, that's my two cents worth there. All righty, next up is our agenda approval. Alex is, I think he told everybody, five.
Mr. Mayor, five and six. Staff are requesting we remove those items. We're not, not quite ready for those yet.
Five and six, remove. And then I'm asking, I sent y'all an email on Crestwind, the language that we have to submit to the legislature to be approved for a satellite annexation. So I sent that to y'all. So I'd like to put that on the agenda as nine A. Any other changes or deletions? All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as submitted? Motion by Laurie.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ayers, all in favor?
Need as amended.
Oh, as amended? Yeah, as amended.
Not as submitted.
Right, submitted. There we go. All, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Let y'all know, Mr. Richardson, his son's having surgery right now, so that's why he's not here. Mr. Graham is working. And Ms. Drake is, her son is sick. That's, that's why we have a limited amount of, we still have a quorum, but I'll just let y'all know where everybody is, so. All righty, next up is our rezoning, RZ 24 dot 10 dot 01. This is a public hearing, right? All right. Okay. So we have a general rezoning from this 24 dot 10 dot 01, 5749 Stevens Mill Road. There's been a lot of, we certainly appreciate everybody's correspondence, letting us know how you feel. That's what we do up here. We represent y'all. So we want to know what you think. So it's not a foregone conclusion at which way we're going to vote. I have no idea. So that's why we want to hear from y'all. But there has been some confusion on the conditional zoning. So we asked two things, and the TIA. So I got information on one of them, and I'll let our attorney. We asked her to address the conditional zoning. She sent out a letter. I forwarded it to Tom, and hopefully he sent it to a bunch of people. So Melanie, if you could explain your rationale on your decision?
Question being whether or not this could be switched to conditional zoning?
Correct.
The applicant has to submit an application and ask for conditional zoning, and the applicant has to approve all of the conditions. For a conditional zoning application, it shall include site plan, landscape plans, building elevations, and such other information required to approve the bodies with the complete and accurate description of the proposed development. Whereas straight rezoning is very general in nature, a conditional rezoning is particular to the parcel with the site-specific conditions. So at this stage in the game, no. Any request for conditional zoning has to come from the applicant, not from the board.
All right, thank you. The second issue was the TIA. Yeah, sure.
In the email that you sent out, I know kind of up at the top, there was one piece that said that even if this was a conditional, the conditions can only be applied to the actual parcel that the zoning is taking place on?
Correct. Only the particular parcel that needs to be rezoned, not, not to any other parcels.
Okay.
And the conditions have to be related to bring the parcel into compliance with our zoning regulations as a whole.
The two things, the concessions that the applicant has offered are totally unrelated to the rezoning on tonight's agenda?
Correct. Remember, I was not involved with that first part.
Right.
That was MAC, but that's my understanding that's been approved and done.
Well, what first part? Maybe I misunderstood that.
The, the large commercial development. That's already been approved.
Yeah, the Cambridge Hall.
Well, I mean, and, and that was done back, what, 2018, 2017? Somewhere in that neighborhood?
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, Max.
Absolutely.
So I provided a timeline with the memo that was submitted, but I think what you're referring to is the application for the overall site plan for the Jrayson Development was.
That particular question was actually the zoning for the.
So the zoning that initially took place in mixed-use two for the Masswide Town Ride rezoning?
Yeah.
2018.
2018.
And then the application for this overall site plan for the commercial was submitted in 2020, September 11, 2020. This general rezoning application that we're considering tonight was submitted October 23, 2024. Any, any other specific dates?
When was the TIA done?
The TIA was completed, it was conducted between November 2021 to July 2023 due to COVID delays. So it was completed in July 2023.
Got you.
Did that TIA did that, that for the Stinson Farms and this development?
It incorporated all the surrounding other developments that are, that were planned as well.
All right, thank you, Max.
Yeah, thanks.
One more question.
You for Max?
Yeah. So, so Max, we've heard a couple of times tonight that maybe there was something about that TIA that was maybe different, or maybe it's, doesn't take into account certain things. Could you kind of explain to us what?
So I'm not aware of anything that the TIA is missing, but I think maybe the engineering team, since they're specifically over TIA, might be able to better answer that.
Okay, okay.
Sorry to bring engineering into it. But I'm, I deal mostly with zoning.
Okay.
The TIA, did that also incorporate the changing of the, like adding lanes and things like?
Yeah, I, I would say for the TIA, if engineering would be so kind to come up and discuss that TIA. That's, that's the engineering purview.
Yeah, so to calculate the future growth rate out to 2030, it took into consideration the Aria development, Stinson Farms. the Aria development, Stinson Farms, Sante Matthews on the other side of 485 there, that new development in Matthews there, as well as the Stallings Farms development, which is going in right around Stallings Elementary, right across from that. And then in addition to that, there was a 1% compounding growth rate through 2030. And those were, that was the future growth that was taken into consideration during this traffic study.
They, oh, it incorporated the changing of the, I mean, they can't change the intersection, but they can change, they can add on lanes?
Yes. All the transportation improvements were a result of the traffic volume calculations with that study. So with all those developments taken into consideration.
Did this development also was part of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It was actually a direct result of the TIA. So those extra lanes were the result of the TIA.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
What is the estimated, I mean, if it's, they calculated how much traffic this would generate. Do they, does it include that in the document on how many cars are coming in and coming out?
Yes.
Okay. So what was that?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Well, actually, I may have. There are maps associated with these that show the exact traffic counts, and I don't have that with me, but for each specific movement, the average, on average, and then during peak hours as well. Peak hours being morning from seven to eight, and evening from five to six.
Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes, ma'am.
But for this particular parcel, the .78 acres of a parcel, there's no requirement for TIA?
Correct. Correct.
The size.
Yeah, I apologize. I was speaking to the Cambridge Hall TIA. That's already been approved.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
While we're talking about the TIA, we had a call, David Shoal and Alex and Kevin Parker, the engineer that was just up, we had a call with the developer and his transportation planner last week, talking about the TIA. More specifically, I was concerned about the traffic light in front of the proposed development, the distance between that light and the Shanamar entrance, and the distance between the light, or new proposed light and Stevens Mill, Idlewild Road, and how much it would back up. And so I asked, I called Brett Knife, who's the lead engineer for District 10, which is this is our district on Friday, and he was unaware of the TIA because he's the top dog. You know, he had staff looking at it. So he promised me he was going to look at it. And, you know, that was Friday, so today's Monday, so he didn't have a chance to get back to me yet. So I'm waiting on his expert opinion. He's the, like I said, he's the lead engineer for District 10, which is what all projects go through him. So that's the concern I had as well, is the distance between there and how much it would back up, especially from, it's called Entrance Access C to Shanamar Drive, how much it would back up at eight o'clock with buses and things like that. So that concerns me as well.
Did you say that he was unaware that there was a traffic study?
Yeah. Well, he's the, let's say he's the CEO.
Right.
And so, and he's not aware of every project that comes along, so I've asked him to review it.
Okay. So somebody reviewed it and approved it?
Oh, his staff. Somebody, his staff.
His staff?
Yeah. It's been fully approved by the state. This is not a public hearing, but I see there's some people that wish to talk. You know, council's still going to talk, but I want to let everybody have something to say. I want to hear you. So Tom, did you have something else that you had?
I think...
Mayor, will you just make a motion to amend the rules?
Okay. Can I get a motion to amend the rules? Thank you, Melanie.
Uh, so, I'll second.
All right. Motion by Laurie, second by Stephen. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. All right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, Melanie.
So we understand some of the logistics and technicalities that the particular parcel in question doesn't necessarily necessitate or trigger another TIA. We wanted to elevate it to your attention. The TIA, the summary, the entire TIA was actually provided by town engineer, Mr. Parker. And the summary of that, NC DOT stated that they felt that the adjustments to the Idlewild Corridor, they did not address Stevens Mill, which is a completely different concern, but they said that the Idlewild Corridor with the changes made would accommodate the additional traffic flow based on a 1% increase in population. And as we mentioned in the neighborhood meeting, I don't know if you all, any of you were present or sitting in the audience at that time, but it was readdressed the fact that because of all of the developments, Stinson Farms, the new apartments, and the townhomes that are going to be going in, and a large development that is going to be going in on Idlewild off of Chris Mark, all of those combined are going to add up to somewhere between 2,000 and 3,000 new heartbeats living in the immediate area. That's all going to contribute to traffic counts. So the 1% metric that NC DOT wanted to apply to the load that would be occurring in Idlewild really doesn't represent what's going to actually happen. You're going to have probably anywhere from, at a low end, almost 7% increase of active population to potentially as high as 15 to 18%. So we just wanted to elevate that to you all's understanding and view because it will make a big impact. And this property, because it is a retail development, whether it's developer's intent or not, when the gas station and the fast food restaurant are installed, it is typical for those types of entities to install directional freeway signage that will direct traffic off the freeway into the community to seek out fueling and food options, which will now appear very soon at Idlewild and Stevens Mill. Just wanted to make sure that you are all aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I think he covered it.
He covered it? Yeah, Jeannie.
Jeannie, I forgot to say my, Jeannie Lindsay, I forgot to say my address earlier, 5639 Anglesey Court. And I'll agree with Tom and also mention that a recent report that interviewed David Shoal on the news was reporting just last summer that the past three years in Stallings has seen a 6.8% growth. And as we heard from Kevin, the engineer, the traffic study was 1% expected growth averaged used. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Anybody else? Yes, sure.
Terry Williams with We Throw Capital, the developer applicant landowner. Just wanted to add that we are willing, if we do acquire the Alexander property, to make that buffer match all the way around the Alexander property to buffer this Shanamara clubhouse. And just to point out, the traffic study is not related to the parcel we're talking about tonight, but it did take into account all the growth along the corridor and then apply the 1% increase on top of that. So I just want to point that out. If anybody has any questions, I'm here if you need me.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else?
Yeah.
You need to...
I have a clarifying question. The engineer says...
Sir, sir, could you come up here and give us your name and address, please? Thank you.
Alex Hearn, 408 Gregg and Court. I just have a clarifying question to engineering. When was traffic survey done? Because if it was done during COVID, I think it's widely out of date.
Yeah, it was 2021 and finished in 2023.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty. Pull up something here. Bear with me. Anybody else? All right. I'll close that public hearing there and discussion from council. Any questions we need from staff? Any concerns?
I think my, I think my biggest concern here is that, I mean, I hear what people have said about the TIA, but my understanding is, and I'm looking at you, Kevin, my understanding is that the TIA is the, is a result of the impact of traffic for that particular development, right? So just to make sure that I fully understand, is that, does, I mean, the traffic going in or out of that parcel is not necessarily going to change, right, over the course of a TIA?
The parcel in question, would this rezonate?
Just in general, just over the whole project. But what I'm trying to ask is, like, they're only responsible for the impact that they're doing to the area.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Sorry I made you walk off.
No, no.
Okay.
All righty. Any other comments, questions for staff? All right. What's the pleasure of the council then? We can vote, delay it, wait for Brad, Graham, and Taylor Ray, or what's the pleasure? Your pleasure?
Well, I, less than a mile from there, too, and I do not like the traffic, and I do not believe that adding lanes is going to help that intersection because there's still cars that have to go into that. You know, it's the same amount of cars. You know, this will be adding some cars, but, and I realize, Melanie, that it's not, nothing to do with this parcel that they want to rezonate. And I'm concerned, did you have a map, Max?
A map of the...
A map of the development?
I do have one digitally.
Digitally?
I did not print out prior to this.
Okay.
I do have a digital one.
A small one.
Well, I mean, I think the digital one would be better, actually.
You know.
I think the digital one would be better.
Yeah, I'll bring, just...
Sorry.
I apologize for not bringing it. I just, it's Monday. You know, we have got a lot of contact today about things, but I will just go ahead and print, I'll pull it up.
I'm concerned, I know, I'm concerned about this whole development as the neighbors are, but...
I know where it is.
Like I said, you know, all we're talking about tonight is the one parcel.
I know that.
Yeah.
I know that. And that's, you know, too bad because not much we can, I, yeah, you know, I don't think it's a good place to have that. But anyway, yeah, that's, I can't really say nay because it has nothing to do with this less than acre parcel.
All right. I can't see. I'll put it there. Apologize. There it is. What questions do you have about the site plan that's...
Can you enlarge that?
Of course. So the specific parcel that we're, that we're requesting rezoning tonight is actually this square right here, and this is Stevens Mill Road.
And so what, so there's nothing on there right now because it's...
There's a house currently located on there.
No, I mean, there's not a proposal on there because it's still residential?
Currently, yes. Correct. It was single-family residential one at the time of the site plan approval.
So it has been approved? It has been approved?
This site plan was approved, yes.
Yes, okay.
With the house still on there, or was there, I don't see anything on there, a building?
So this specific parcel, the small parcel that we're rezoning tonight, has a house on it?
Right.
It's rezoning from single-family residential one to Mix Use 2. That's a request. So the applicant can submit a proposal to incorporate that parcel into the site plan.
All right.
Is there any other questions on the site plan? Or the rezoning?
So this is, is approved?
Currently, if the applicant wished to, they could go forward with the approved concept plan.
Oh, go back, go back up.
Yeah, this is the adjacent approved development.
Right. Okay.
And then at the intersection right here, this is Idlewild Road.
And show me the entrance onto Idlewild.
Is currently right here. It's a right in, right out.
There are right, right in, right out?
On Idlewild.
That we, okay.
Any other questions for Max? All right.
Who, me? I mean, I guess, I mean, I'm going to be honest with people. I mean, for me, the problem here is, is that, I mean, I feel like, I know that people don't like the development here that we just looked at, but in some ways, that development's already in the hopper to some extent. And I'm not sure I know how not approving this or approving it necessarily helps with the issue here at hand because if we don't approve it, they've got a site plan here. It's already approved. They can move forward with. They do approve it. There's some changes that go on. I just don't fully feel like I'm between a rock and a hard place because I don't, I don't really, I don't really, yeah, it's, I understand where everybody's at, but that plan is already approved and ready to grow, and we're just talking about a small, as you can tell, parking, piece of the parking lot here.
All right. Well, let's, am I still, can I still let him speak?
I mean, it wasn't ever a public hearing anyway.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Mary Barrett in Ishmore Court. We have over 700 families living in Shanamara, to my knowledge, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Last week was the first time I've heard of any of this, and I'm sure I'm not the only one in Shanamara who got blindsided. How do we get to this point with an entire subdivision that doesn't know a development like this is going in? Anybody answer that for me?
It's because it's by right.
By right? What does that mean?
Every piece of land has a zoning applied to it, right? And in that zoning, there's things that can be built there by state law, by right. In other words...
Wow.
You, there are, so we actually have a table of uses that's aligned to every zone, and so, and everything has to have a zone. And so whatever that zone is, there are certain things that can be built there without having to come through and get approvals.
Okay. When you look at the drive coming out of Shanamara on, the Shanamara, not the Divide Drive, but on Shanamara Drive, it's my understanding that there's going to be a stoplight. What, how far? Where are they?
Five.
500 feet?
500.
Is it that far?
No.
50 feet?
Oh, no. It's somewhere in the 500 range. Yeah. From Max's, yeah.
I've got people here who would answer that.
Yeah, ma'am.
Yeah.
Speak to us, would you please?
Okay. So you've got people coming out in the morning when they're going to work, you've got school buses, but they're coming out and they have to stop today, you know, and look down Stevens Mill and see if anything's going there, and if not, make a right-hand turn. You get enough cars who are at the stoplight, we're going to have cars all the way backed up and both school buses down Shanamara Drive. Is there another way of doing that?
Well, as I said, I've contacted the lead engineer and asked him to look at it.
Okay. And when you find out, will you let us know?
I sure will.
Okay. That's, I think that's what we would appreciate, a little transparency in what's going on within, part of the reason we picked to live there was not to be Ballentine, and it looks like that's what we're going to end up. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All righty. Counsel, welcome, Brad.[1792.41] Welcome, Brad.
Sorry I'm late, ma'am.
That's all right. Family comes first.
Absolutely.
We're, we're in the middle of this rezoning, so a lot of good discussion, a lot of good points. I don't know if you've had time to read all their emails. I'm sure you have, as diligent as you are. So just trying to make a decision on how we want to proceed. I think we've asked all the questions, we've heard from the citizens, so what's the pleasure of the council? I'll ask again. I mean, if you want, it sounds like you want to table it. I, I don't know, so I just need to hear from you.
I wouldn't mind tabling it, but I don't know what we're going to, going to do if we table it. You know, we're just going to think about it for two weeks and then put it back on and.
Yeah, exactly. All right, well, I'm going to call for a motion then, one way or the other.
My biggest thing here is that if we don't approve it, you're moving forward anyway, right? So, I mean, I hear what people are saying, but at the other end of the spectrum, we're going to have one parcel that's just kind of hanging out there that, that potentially could be used for something else. Can, can I ask another question?
Sure.
If we do rezone this tonight, what, what is the intent? Is the intent for you to re, to resubmit a different plan for the overall arching project? Well, like.
Mr. Williams, we just know that you have to just judge this parcel on the rezoning and consider all of the uses that are allowed under that rezoning category. Anything, he's not tied to anything he says for his intent for that parcel.
You're not under any blood oath right here, so, but.
We would intend just to reconfigure the buildings across the front. You mentioned, just looks like a hole in the parking lot. There's a couple of buildings there that could be laid out better to make a border along Stevens Mill Road and not necessarily increase any square footage, but just reorientate the buildings better. That would be an amendment to the already approved concept, concept plan.
And then one of the other amendments was if this was rezoned, you could move the garbage dumpsters, dumpsters further away from Shanamar?
That's correct.
But what's the distance right now, you know, off the top of your head, Terry?
We, we can get it to at least 160 feet. We may be able to go even further than that.
But right now, they're what, 80?
Yeah, it's, it's 70 plus about 20 feet, maybe, so I'll say 90.
90, okay, thank you.
So Max, how, how does that process work for the resubmital of the, I mean, the amendment part, process?
So if this was to be rezoned, mixed-use two, and they wanted to incorporate this parcel, they would have to resubmit a new concept plan, site development plan, and follow Article 7.7s for review.
7.
7.7.
7.7.
Yeah, so it would just be an amendment to the site plan. And they would probably incorporate some of their residents' requests and some of the things they can, added in their emails.
Yeah, still not a conditional zoning.
It would not be a conditional zoning. They would have to submit a formal application for that.
Yeah, Brad.
I, I know I came in late, but I believe I understand this pretty well. Notwithstanding some of the discomfort about notification about the rezoning in the neighborhood and all of that from 2017 to 18, 19, something like that, before I was on this council, I do believe what we're talking about is a by-right zoning, that if we don't approve this, this one parcel doesn't prevent the developer from building the grocery store and out parcels. It makes it a better development for all of the community if this parcel is incorporated in. I don't understand the, I understand the discomfort and disgust. I don't understand why we wouldn't do this. I'm ready to make the motion to approve, then we can vote. So I'll make the motion you asked for to approve general rezoning, RZ 24 dot 10 dot 01 5729 Stevens Mill Road. I'll put that motion out there for a second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Richardson. Any further discussion or a second?
Much as I hate to say this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second it because I just don't see where it, with even, I don't see where it helps relay any of the issues that have been brought here tonight. I think those issues are going to exist whether we approve this or not.
All right. Yes.
It's kind of hard to sit up here and look at a bunch of my neighbors and realize that trying to separate the wishes and hopes of what you want to have happen to the project are 100% not related to this parcel that we're rezoning tonight. Zoning tonight will not trigger a TIA. We can't bind the developer to any agreements on the parcel, the, the project, based on what we do tonight on, on this rezoning. This zoning, I remember when it came up a few years ago, to go back to, uh, single-family, was the owners came in, the residents that we know, the Dunkins, came in and asked, we're going to live here for a few more years, we don't want to pay MU2 taxes. And we, as a council, said, sure, we'll bump that back down and, and, but knowing that it was all around them, MU2. So it's only logical that it go back to MU2 and that it won't have minimal, if any, effect on the overall project, which I have some of the same concerns you do, but realizing where the town is at legally and procedurally, this will have almost zero effect on the project. It will have probably a plus effect by allowing the developer to redo an entrance to the project. But in, in the overall, looking back down at this project and seeing what, what its impact is, is that, as Stephen said, it's, it's a tiny island in the project of MU2.
All right, I got a motion and a second. A motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Ayers, all in favor?
Aye.
What was, is Laurie?
I said aye.
All right, I, thank you. Eyes have it, it's 4-0, so it's approved as a rezoning. So certainly appreciate everybody coming out and we'll be transparent on everything that happens further. But while I got you here, somebody made the good point about how much development is going on. You know, I know this is a, a, I want to insult you, older crowd, my kids are out of school, I'm in that older crowd, but Stallings Elementary is already over capacity. I've talked with Melissa Merrill, who's on the county commissioners, used to be the school board chair. They tell me Stallings Elementary is at 100, 101, 102% capacity, but it's built for 120%. My wife just finished up a, an interim there where she was there every day for three, four months. And she, she doesn't believe that, so I, we, you, you need to tell, be in the same, uh, show the same tenacity with the county commissioners where they have to put more money towards schools, less money towards other areas. Schools and roads are where they need, and the sewer plant, where they need to be putting their money. And they need to hear from us on, on that versus putting money elsewhere. So just while I have you all here, and so, and it affects Shanamar, you know, people who have children and with all those new neighborhoods going up. So thank you all for coming out and we'll head on with the agenda. So if you all want to stay, you're more than welcome to. Oh, yeah, I got to stay. They don't want to hear that.
Probably won't.
All righty, the statement of consistency and reasonableness for RZ 24 dot 01 requests with Stevens, Stevens Village LLC submitted a general rezoning request for single-family residential one, SFR one, to mixed-use two, MU two, at the location of parcel ID 0705 709F, a property of .78 acres and, and size at 5749 Stevens Mill Road. So the, this motion, the town council approves the proposed amendment and stated that the town council finds that, determines that the zoning amendment is consistent and reasonable with the key guiding principles, goals, and objectives of the comprehensive land use plan. So I can I get a motion to approve the, motion by Laurie? Second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, eyes have it, all righty. Next up, annexation 58, Aaron?
Next step in this annexation is for the court to have completed a certificate of sufficiency about this application. I have done so and do certify that the, the application is accurate. And so it is sufficient to move forward. So all I'm doing right now is just presenting you officially on record with the certificate of sufficiency. And the next step would be for the council to approve the resolution that sets the public hearing date for this annexation. The public hearing date for this annexation, we have set to May 27th. Just so you know, that is, it's a little far out just because we're coinciding that with the permitting zoning application that they're also doing. So we're just trying to back off, and Max is scheduled there for that. And it is on a Tuesday because we are not meeting on that Monday because it is Memorial Day. So all you have to do here is just to approve the resolution.
Right. So can I get a motion to approve resolution fixing the date of the public hearing on question of annexation?
I need a map, sorry.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168 dash 31. Max, you, you got, you got a map? Oh, it's up there? There it is.
The parcel is highlighted here.
And where's 74? At 74, okay.
Near Biscuitville, that was the description Alex gave us last time.
Sounds like he's been there before. No.
No, we're good.
We're good.
I just want to know where everything is.
I'm going to change it to imagery here, Ms. Wadowitz, so you can see. Orient you. Paratac, I'm saying that. Start to see the, the southern part of Union West Business Park. Chestnut Parkway.
Oh, is that, is those three parcels there considered part of Union West?
The, the deed says Union West, but because of the bypass, they're effectively cut off, so no.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Shoal. Can I get a second? Second by Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, resolution? All right, next up is Melanie with the town's Trademark Registration Administration.
I include, in your agenda packet is, included the correspondence I received from O'Leith Law Firm. We have a registration trademark for Gateway to Union County. It only lasts for 10 years, so we're coming up at the end of this year at the expiration of that 10-year period. So if we want to keep it, we need to notify this law firm and they will take care of the required paperwork in order to allow us to have that for another, for another 10 years.
Okay. Any questions for Melanie?
I kind of asked earlier, kind of off the record, but, hey, we don't use this trademark anywhere currently, right?
Not anymore.
Not anymore. It raises some questions as to maybe there's other things that we have that probably should be trademarked. But they're here nor now, but, um, it's a relatively trivial amount of money comparatively.
Yeah, I hate to lose it.
Yeah.
Me?
Yeah. Okay.
Certain amount of money, but, uh.
Did I hear 150?
Cost?
Yeah.
2,500.
Um, for 10, for 10 years. Right, it's 1,925 includes there these, a 650 for a class government fee and disbursements. After the deadline, you can do it with an extra.
Is there a discount for renewing versus recreating it in five years, 10 years?
I don't know. I don't do, I don't practice this type of law, so I.
There goes my question. I was going to ask you if you could just refile for us.
All right, can I get a motion?
If you want to keep it, I'll make, I, I don't know that it's useful. I was, I joked with Alex today, Gateway to Union County makes it feel like this is a pass-through town to something different. So it feels like it goes against our, our thought of placemaking, town center, that kind of stuff. I don't mind keeping it if there's a need to use it, so I'll make the motion, but.
Oh, wait a minute. I mean, you know me, I'm not.
I'm waiting for you to say that, yeah. There, there are very few communities, and I also, there are very few communities that could ever trademark that or would want to. Marvin would be one.
They would.
Weddington would be one. Enson County, whatever town is over there would. I, I'd make the motion to let it expire.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shoal, to let the trademark Gateway to Union County expire. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, so. Next up is Town Manager's Report.
Oh, I, I was going to go over my new brand of, of clothing that's going to be Gateway to Union County.
Too late. All right, Alex, you're up.
All right, thank you.
This is why I came late to hear your balance scorecard report, by the way.
I appreciate your commitment and dedication, Councilmember Richardson.
See, I told everybody you were late because you didn't want to hear me bellyache about my 401K.
Partly true.
So when it comes to the town, we've got a lot of different moving parts, a lot of different people. You've got the town council, you've got the planning board, you've got the community committee, you've got the store committee, a number of committees, the stormwater committee. You've got businesses, you've got residents, you've got other local government priorities. We have to take everything into consideration. And in a way, that can get pretty messy at times. And that's a good thing, in some sense, because democracy is, is messy. And so what the balance scorecard tries to do is it tries to take everything together as far as values, mission, vision, town council priorities, department priorities, public input, and it tries to put it all together into a strategic planning document that increase, allows it to be a communication device, allows it to hold ourselves accountable and to make sure that we're moving forward in the strategic direction that the board wants. So this is quite a lengthy document. I want to thank the board for your support. I want to thank all our department heads and staff for the hours they spent on getting this together. We've been here for, I think, three hours since our first budget meeting. We could probably be here for another three hours talking just about the balance scorecard. But I'm just going to hit the highlights, mainly with the board priorities. And if there's anything else you would like to dive deeper into, just let me know. I'd be happy to do that. So when it comes to the administrative staff, we've done a lot of administrative communicated things out, blog posts, publicizing meetings, broadcasting meetings. And when it comes to economic development, a lot of the board's priorities, the underlying foundation has been a sense of economic development. How do we redevelop some key parts and support our businesses and grow them? And one of the parts, and one of the ideas that's been considered is implementing and enhancing the Union West Business Park. And so the first step in that was working with Mr. Shoal and our planning team in the Economic Development Committee and developing a plan to make some zoning tweaks. We've made those. And next, we're focusing on the roads and also encouraging our county economic development partners with encouraging them to kind of prioritize marketing. So one of the things you'll see in our strategic plan here in a few minutes is that we're going to try to work with the good folks at the county's Economic Development Group and we'll try to kind of develop a partnership there. So we've met all our goals in that sense. Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that, that's the combination Monroe County Economic Development Entity. Now, as you've been following the news, you know. Now, as you've been following the news, you know that those groups are splintering apart with good, with good, good feelings all around, as far as I know. And Monroe is doing and separating as their own economic development entity. And then the county is creating a separate economic development entity. So there are a number of items that we sat here, it's in very small writing, but a lot of it is on hold when it comes to the town center and creating that place that our residents asked for in the last Conference of Land Use Plan. And it's about holding park events. It's Stallings Municipal Park, creating that placemaking, that sense of place, that gathering place right here in our town center. Also, at the same time, one of the key initiatives has been purchasing the properties in downtown, especially the property next door. And unfortunately, sewer capacity issues and cost have been a challenge when it comes to completely redeveloping that area. So we've, we've developed a interim use. And we're in the process of developing lease with Armored Cow Brewery to open up a location and they would serve food over here next door.
Where are we at with that? I mean, is that pretty close?
Yes, I believe so. I believe we're in the, in the legal nuts and bolts of the lease. And once that's completed, we'll bring it back to your colleagues on the Economic Development Commission, which all have tasked with kind of finalizing and making sure the lease is good. And then once that's completed, we'll bring it back to the town council for hopefully your approval. Ms. Cox, sorry to catch you cold, but any other updates on the armored cow lease that you might want to share right now, other than we're working on it?
Not yet. We've got their cost estimate. And the challenging part for me, and I have another attorney, Gray Austin, helping me with this, is that's have to be right in improvement to the building and not something specific, just to the brewery use. So like if it's certain equipment that's just for right brewing or the distribution of beer, that doesn't necessarily equate to a renovation. So it's just taking some time to understand what those improvements are and make sure we make an exception.
Why is that required? Because of type of sale it is?
Because it is, you're leasing it and the understanding is right, you're, we're not charging what the normal per square footage is for the market area for that type of building, but we're giving them a credit for the improvements that they're making to the property.
Melanie, it'd be improving the, the building in the sense that it would bring value to the town, whereas the brewery actually mechanisms, they, we wouldn't keep those, they would take them with them, and so that can be valued.
But like repaving the parking lot, like anything that in 10 years, 20, if, when we get it back, is an improvement. Count that towards that formula.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Ms. Cox, that was helpful. So we've done a number of things aimed at adopting a fiscally responsible annual budget. We've created a priority action plan. We had one of our meetings earlier today. Thank you all for being there and just really trying to be mindful because we are in a really difficult budget year.
But here is yes, we've created, but at the same token, I mean, like last year we did use, in the last couple of years, we've used the unrestricted funds, right?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I confirmed this with Jesse because I had the same question. And I believe the, the funds we used were largely ARPA funds. And we didn't use unrestricted fund balance or debt for operational expenditures. I believe we used some for capital expenditures, which under the, the town's policy is appropriated, is appropriate, excuse me.
Okay. So creative accounting would say that we don't, but I got you.
This year is the first year with the ARPA funds that it creates that gap. And we're going to have to fill that, that gap that was previously filled with ARPA funds with local funds. Or make some very, very uncomfortable service cuts to core services, decreasing trash frequency, fewer police officers on a shift, less street maintenance, things like that. Also, at the same time, the board said, hey, we want to make sure that we're paying our employees a fair market wage because that increases attraction and retention. And turnover is more expensive than just attracting and retaining good employees that we've already have. It's, at the same time, COVID was just a, hopefully, a unique experience in our lifetimes where we saw inflation just spike, and that spiked personnel costs with our, with our budget. And so the board said, hey, we need to also put a cap on that. So if we have this extreme situation, it doesn't torpedo the town's budget moving forward. So we set a CPI cap on there. So we held our occupancy tax, and then we updated the five-year, or we're in the process of updating the capital program. And that's everything. Yes, sir.
Occupancy tax, just had a question. Are we thinking we're going to try again this year? Or yes, no?
I hope so.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so, I mean, when do we need to have that discussion?
You know what, does everybody support putting it back on the, on the ballot? Okay.
Advertising or
Okay.
No, they're, they're giving us a higher tax and, you know, people are just not understanding what it really is. And that's why I think it got voted down.
Okay. Let us, Aaron, would you please make a note of that? And what we can do is come back with y'all with the process for putting it on the ballot for November of 2025. And then from there, we'll also come back with y'all with, with costs. All right, and I'm not going to go through all these workforce numbers. I'm going to stick on the highlighted in green items, which are council. So another thing here with finance, update the forecast and submit this. So obviously, we've been looking at our five-year financial forecasts, really focusing on a two-year cycle there. And, and we'll go from there. Finance. Engineering. So I think the balance scorecard is really conducive to measuring a lot of the work that engineering does. And really, the funding that the board is providing for road maintenance is, is making a difference. So you can see we've had a lot of success. We're, we're a little bit slow in the sidewalk, but we're going to keep on moving there. I don't think that's anything indicative. And really, I think this is a year of transition in some areas when it comes to stormwater and sidewalk. Whereas road maintenance, we're on, we're on a roll, you know? We've got the system in place, we're moving, we've been consistent with our staff, and so things are going. So we're really trying to get our MS4 permit together and get that moving and up to date. That's our federal, our state permit through the fed, or excuse me, our federal permit through the state that allows us to operate our stormwater program. And, and it's really a year of transition and learning. And we'll be talking a little bit more about that within the budget process. So that's everything with engineering. Parks, so you can see here, the big thing when it comes to the town center, the parks, is, is the farmer's market. We had a partnership with Union County, and that farmer's market didn't work out. And so I really want to credit our Parks Department. They went out and found a partner, a private sector partner in the first year of the Sunny and Stallings Farmer's Market. After hearing back from the operator, from the public, and also the vendors and how much they're making, it was successful. And you can't judge success by one year. Really, a three-year window is what we need to judge success. But the first year was solid. It's not, it's not perfect, but it was, it was pretty solid and worth continuing and moving on. And then finally, planning and zoning. Mr. Shoal and his team have been very busy with a number of priorities. So first here is, you know, really supporting the action priorities for the town center. We've seen the streetscape requirements approved. And then also, you can see, we've implemented that into the Stallings Development Ordinance. So if a developer comes and they want to develop and they meet the criteria within our town center area, then they have to actually put in a really nice streetscape that'll be consistent in the whole townwide area. So you don't have mix and match, and it really puts the onus on the developer to cover that cost. The, one of the big things that we've been working on has been the Silver Line and Hospital Integration Plan. When it comes to the hospital area, one of the board's priorities is try to increase positive development, really try to capture a lot of that positive tax base in that area. And in the near future, you're have, you're going to have the, the small area plan and the Conference of Land Use updates. And I believe it's the development, Max, keep me honest, the development ordinance that we've run into a wrinkle with the General Assembly. That's correct. So as you all know from my emails, the General Assembly changed some laws, it's created some unintended consequences. So we're waiting for the General Assembly to fix it so that we can implement our transit overlay district in that area.
Well, talking about the Silver Line, you know, at our annual retreat, I told you I'd call Mayor Matthews. I think y'all wanted me to, so I did that, talked to John Higgin. But the status of the Silver Line in his mind, and telling him, you know, Stallings is here to help him any way we could. His frustration is still with the legislature not putting enough pressure on on the city council of Charlotte. And so he's fighting that battle with his local person that won't help him out as much as he thinks they should be helping him out. So it's an uphill battle, as we all know, so.
Sir, that's helpful. Thank you. All right, we've obviously ensured we've partnered with ATRIM. And then finally, I mentioned this earlier, Max has partnered to reduce our, some of the industrial setbacks and make some zoning changes when it comes to Union West Business Park. So those are the, that's the balance, oh, I'm sorry, I forget, last but certainly not least, police. So done a lot of work in, in community engagement. And you'll see that. I want to shout out Chief Franks and his team, our community officer, Ty Pham, for his work. And we're doing a lot of great work with holding trainings, public awareness with our residents, really trying to get into that community engagement that our police department is known for. This is the biggest measure out of all the measures in the town. Took three years of work to get Kalia accredited, and so I really want to recognize them again. And another thing I wanted to cite was, one of the things that was identified was a need to improve firearms proficiency within our police department. We set a goal of 80%. And now I'm happy to report that thanks to our officers' hard work and chief's leadership, with the qualification is about 95%, so.
What does that mean, 80% of what?
It's, it's a score based on the, the shooting training. Chief, do you mind sharing a little bit about what that means?
All right.
And then in addition, we wanted to also implement movement-based decision-making. And as part of that, too, firearms proficiency is in a, in a vacuum, in a, in a calm setting like this, is much easier than if you're running, if you're under stress. And so Chief has implemented a voluntary fitness program as well, with y'all's support in, in creating an incentive for that. So thank you. And that concludes the balance scorecard report. Happy to take any questions.
Well, so on a yearly basis, I mean, next year or this year, is 95% kind of the score or kind of how, how will this move forward from year to year?
So we adhere to the standard we could So we talked about our numbers where they are.
All right, any other questions on that? Okay.
And this was on last Friday's email?
It should be in the, in the email link for the agenda packet, I believe. Is that right, Aaron? For the scorecard?
Okay, okay.
And if you have any trouble finding, just shoot me a message. I'm happy to send it out.
It's on the website, okay.
And finally, annual retreat follow-up. I know it's getting late, so I'll cruise this. Y'all, take your time with it. I know this is important, and I didn't mean to put it last, it just kind of happened.
Well, it's not last. The mayor put something last.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you. That makes me feel better. So obviously, we hold a meeting every year. The board creates priorities. The priorities, a lot of them, the core ones have been the same, although we made some tweaks, added a new one this year. And so based on the conversation, the board kind of tasked me to make a draft and a first shot at an action plan for how to best implement those priorities. So obviously, a lot of them is the same, but basically the board's trying to provide excellent service in a fiscally responsible manner, pursue our residents' idea of an ideal community, and invest in economic development for a sustainable and productive tax base. And that's it, I think. That's what I'm hearing from y'all in a nutshell. And those are good, noble things to pursue. So we, we're going to try to do this for a variety of methods, town center creation, enhancing and supporting Union West Business Park, and excluding sewer capacity alternatives, and considering quality of life improvements for our residents that aren't dependent on sewer capacity, and just really focusing and trying to foster positive development around the hospital and the light rail area. So the focus, first one is focused on mid-range financial planning. I think Councilmember Richardson, you brought this up, is that when we're talking, it's like, really, this probably isn't long range. When you think about long range and local government, you think, you know, probably 10, 15, 20 years. Really, we're more mid-range. So how, when we do that, we're focused on the mid-range planning, what are we looking at? Well, we want to kind of try to focus on a two-year cycle as best we can. So obviously, we've got our priority and creation and priority setting process. We need to adopt a budget. We need to continuing updating our forecast and our CIP. We need to develop a property reevaluation strategy with a range of options relative to the revenue neutral tax rate. We're on track there. And then I think it's a little early to be able to commit to a two-year budget cycle right now for '25, '26, and '26, '27. But we can look at doing a two-year budget process for '26, '27. I don't think we have the capacity to do it right now, but we may be able to. We just kind of, kind of see where we're at. Then, so. And I'm going to keep on rolling if y'all have any questions or concerns, or, I don't know what this is, Alex, please stop me. So we want to ensure prudent management of expenditures, so implementing a pay study. We want to look holistically. We want to, we don't want to pay our, our staff too little. We don't want to pay them way crazy amount because that's inefficient use of tax money. We pay them just right, right? The Goldie asked, what's the fair market rate for having great staff? And implement a performance plan and then follow the town's adopted pay policy. So a lot of what we're already doing. And then communicate to engage citizens regarding the budget. So prior to budget adoption, we want to have that committee meeting that we talked about with the town council. We've got that scheduled for May 19th, I believe. Thank you, Mayor and Ms. Nichols. And then hold a public hearing, obviously, and then publish that, that budget process meeting schedule to any resident. And I heard another idea Councilmember Ayers mentioned, you know, maybe on the backend of budget meetings, there's an opportunity for, for members of the public to, to ask questions, give input, things like that. So I would defer to you all on whether you'd like to do that, but that is another option to move that priority on. The next one is pursue sewer alternatives. And really, there's, there's several things here. A lot of our And really, there's, there's several things here. A lot of our, a lot of the conversation the board had at the annual retreat was focused on sewer package plants. You're gonna be getting development applications with those. How do we handle it? It's kind of a niche piece of technology. We don't have the capability, and I don't, I don't know if any town would, to be able to properly evaluate the current state of where we're at with that. So we're gonna circle back around, and in the near future, remind y'all, get into the details of where we're at sewer capacity-wise, just as a county and an area. And then next, Centralina, it's my understanding they've expressed an intent to study the package plan issue, and just see what they're doing, maybe piggyback on some stuff there, just get some good regionalization. Then we could also potentially consider funding and commissioning an independent third-party analysis in the '25, '26 budget, analyzing the pros and cons of current package plant technology. What does that mean? Is there a local engineering firm we could hire that could really kinda help us better understand what that means? And then, based on that, develop a town council position on what you think about package plants. Is it something that you like and would be open to, or is it something that, we don't like that right now? And then...
And would that be an ordinance, or would that be just a part of our, our rules and procedures, or?
That's a good question. I, I think there's room to develop what that looks like in my head. It probably is, is a policy of the council, right? So that when developers come and they say, hey, I've got this kind of development, this is what I wanna do. I've got a package plant. Would you be willing to do it? So our staff can say, yes, our board is open to that, or no, our board is not open to that. And depending on the position also, there may be some land use ordinance changes we can make to better enforce that. Just kinda TBD there. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, cause of it, there's three different types of technology, and we're only okay with one of those. Maybe that goes into a part of the zoning land management part of it.
Great point. Absolutely. We're definitely open to that. I think practically, and this is what I'm assuming, is that most developments that are gonna come in, that are gonna spend the upfront capital to install a package plant, basically put in a sewer plant. We've heard how much the counties is gonna be. It's a, I can't count my digits, nine figures, right? 10 figures? Eight figures? Nine figures? Hundred, it's over $100 million. Let's do that here.
It's a lot of money.
Sorry, it's late. Yeah, it's a lot of money. So shrink that down to a much smaller pint size. It's still a heck of a lot of money. So we're not gonna see a package plant most likely for a 30-home subdivision, right? It's gonna be a massive development, probably like the Crest Winds development. So I think when that comes in, it's most likely gonna come in as a conditional zoning. So the board would have a lot of control over whether to improve it or not.
I agree with you. That's the way to go.
And then, of course, we could do an individual evaluation, because the types of technology, there might be eight different ways, and we might, as you said, might be happy with two of them. And we need to evaluate the quality of that technology for that specific product, because once land use decisions are made, there's only one, there are no takebacks, right? You only get one shot. So supporting and enhancing Union West Business Park. David and Brad continue to kind of ask for y'all's thought leadership as the Economic Development Committee leaders. How do we work with Union West Business Park? What are the things we can do? You know, I've already talked with Mr. Shaw, and there might be some additional zoning things we can do. So just having those conversations, maybe council's identified some representatives, maybe come up with a timeline and start engaging the General Assembly members, and kinda seeing what they might wanna do. You know, reconsider local funding for the roads mid-year if council determines state funding efforts are unsuccessful. That's a, kind of a big, big deal, right? There'd be a ton of money budget-wise, that'd be tough. But I put it in there because it might be worth the conversation, right? Do we wanna spend our local money on it, or do we solely wanna rely on state funding?
Why '928? '928 seems like a long time away. Gonna take that long to engage with the representative, or is that hooked to some date slash cycle within General Assembly?
No, no, honestly. I looked at the calendar, and it gave us two or three months to get out of budget, and then a month or two to get out. And so I think budget is probably all-encompassing now, to some extent, maybe for me, not for you. And it would just give us a couple months for those elected officials that, at, at y'all to kind of reach out and make contact with the folks, so. And that's, that was the logic behind it. Happy to move that around and change that date.
Work a lot like the money that we went after for...
Yeah, yeah, it's probably not something we would get immediately, you know? It's probably something you plant the seed, and all of a sudden, there's an opportunity that an elected official at the state level knows about, and they're able to put it into a bill. So I, I think the key, our success, just like a lot of state funding issues, depends on how often and how loudly we contact our elected officials on it, along with the personal relationship we have, so.
Idea there to put together kind of a war plan, if you will?
Yeah, I think the idea would just be try to lobby our state officials to get the, the state to fund the road, road overview, or road overhaul, right? Rebuilding the roads, simple as that. We'd be happy to manage the project if it would make things move easier. We've got that capability in-house, just to make sure it's designed and rebuilt and done up to our standards. From at least an administrative standpoint, there might be some contracting we need to do. And then it's cut off here, but I know a lot, a big part of the Economic Development Committee efforts will be to engage with the new economic development entity and discuss a whole new range of issues that came of the retreat. What's the new structure? What are the potential partnerships? We talked about retail recruitment, the right kind of retail. How the new organization might help with business recruitment, and also business retention and enhancing Union West Business Park. Sewer capacity, I'm sorry, implemented adaptive plans and studies. So basically what this is, is we're gonna bring you during the process some projects that you might wanna consider. Sidewalk projects, green wild projects, parks, streetscape plans. We mentioned looking at the large parcel for sale over here. Is that something we wanna pursue? And any other projects that you see that's not on the list, let us know, you know? Bring it up during the conversation, and we can go out and get a cost. And then pursue town center creation. A lot of the items are, are on hold because the development's on hold. But the big thing is wrapping up that lease, making sure we call it a town center in the downtown. It's taken me a year, but I'm, I'm calling it town center now. And then, you know, we can contract with DFI for review of any, any positive site plans, really get their analysis on whether this is good for our downtown, and continuing to hold a lot of events, right, in our, our parks, try to kinda make this an activity center. Then finally, maximizing positive development around the hospital and light rail. Staff will present small area plan and Conference of Land Use Plan updates, just like we talked about during the balance scorecard, and the TOD district is on hold until the General Assembly makes a decision there. There is also a miscellaneous thing. I didn't know quite where to put it, but we wanna ensure that you all, as the council, are aware of all the transportation projects that are going on in the area. So we're coordinating with DFT to try to get them here to do an overall project review in the area, and let y'all ask all the good questions you have, so. And that concludes it. Happy to change anything, or?
As far as the development around the hospitals, and I never can remember the lady's name, it's got the parcel there. Lauren, yeah, doesn't matter. She, her sign has changed. She's now accepting, asking for tenants.
Oh.
For her building, the medical office building, for what she's calling it right there. So that's the first sign of any development around the...
Okay.
Bound to be, you know, professional, so whether doctors, nurses, or... They're confident that she can fill it up.
Sure. Good.
Any questions for Alex on this? Alex, just thank you very much for all the work you did on this and keeping us up to date and focused on what we need to be working on.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and thank our staff and Aaron and, and everybody.
So we need a, a motion to approve the priorities and action plan, I believe.
I'm moved.
Aye, much by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. All right, next up is the Crest Wind. I asked Alex to put this on there, and it sort of dovetails with what we just talked about. Max gave us the outline of what we needed to do to get this done. So I sent that to Kevin Presley. We were working, he's the owner of the land. He's not the developer of Crest Wind. He's the owner of the land. And so we contacted Dean Arp and Todd Johnson. They gave us this language. I have no, I won't take any responsibility for being this eloquent with what they wrote there. And, but they gave us, this is what we need to ask for. And all this does is give us the ability to review something to be annexed, a satellite. Doesn't have anything to do with the package plant, what type of development it is. It just has, gives us the ability to do this. And it coincides with our priority number two that we talked about. And the second thing is Todd Johnson's already drafted a bill for Indian Trail.
It's for Marvin.
Oh, it's for Marvin?
It's not for Indian Trail, yeah.
He told me, Kevin said, no, it's for Marvin. So, so what Todd would do is just change the language and put our, our name in there with Marvin. And so, so it would happen fairly quickly. Now, that's not to say Crest Wind, Graham was at the same community meeting I was with the Crest Wind. People said they had no desire to be in part of any town, but Kevin's think he's changed their minds on that based on the advantages of coming into Stallings with police protection and only one garbage truck in there a week versus one every day. And when you have 700 homes, they're gonna, chances of them picking one garbage provider is slim and none. So they have a lot of, so, so he's pushing for that, and he thinks he's successful. So that's what all I'm asking to do is, let me draft this letter up, send it up to Todd and Dean so they can put it on into legislation and give us the authority to review any, this type of annexation.
Delicated community.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. But let me just be a little fly in the ointment here. I've talked about this before, the retreat. I am not in favor today of annexing that neighborhood. I've got several reasons. I can go through them if you like.
Yeah, I'd like to hear why you wanna turn down $700,000.
I will. Give me, give me one minute, I'll give you my rationale. But if you'd like to get a letter to the legislatures to, to, for the town to consider annexing, there's a way to do it, and that's by changing some of the words. To my knowledge, we've not been requested, by the way, to annex, have we?
No.
Yeah, and I've been confused about Mr. Presley's role with developer. I don't understand why they'd wanna be annexed. I can understand why we might wanna annex. I'm, I'm serious. I just don't understand why they would wanna be annexed, and I'm okay with them asking us. So if, if we propose a letter to, to the legislatures, I would suggest a few conditions, such as currently the town is unable to consider the annexation. We make this very clear here that we desire and want. I don't desire and want at this present time. I'll tell you why in a moment. So if, if this can be tweaked to let us have the authority to expand the ratio so we can consider it at a future date, after some exhaustive study and understanding of the cost and benefit, I'm fine with it. Here's the reasons why I don't. The budget, I missed the budget that Jesse put together, the five-year plan. Personnel costs went up 14% every year for the next five. How's that related? Expanding the town geographically could have ramifications on staffing. It's generally, and this is generally, a bad idea historically in urban development for towns to stretch and grab single-family homes. I'd like to test that. It's better historically in urban development, and I come from this background. That's why I'm a little bit more passionate about this. It's better for communities to develop inward and up instead of outward and stretched. It's called sprawl. An example, again, I don't love townhomes, and I certainly don't love apartments, neither does this community. However, we've got several town priorities that include transit-oriented development around the hospital. Even if transit never comes, that kind of development is sustainable, because if you look at Bailey Mills, I did this last night. The assessed value on Bailey Mills with 92 homeowners now went from $3.5 million to $35 million overnight when they revalued. Stone Creek Town Homes, 200 owners of townhomes, went from $10 million to $73 million. And they're not even fully complete yet. So my premise is if you build out the town center, if you build out transit-oriented development around the hospital with townhomes multifamily, more dense, no more density around my neighborhood or your neighborhood, or I, I don't think our community supports that. I think our community could support transportation, excuse me, higher density around good transportation nodes like Independence Boulevard. Now, philosophically, that's why I'm just, I recoil at the idea of stretching our town boundaries out for 727 homes. So I'd propose that we, we can write the letter with some wording changes that allows us to consider it, but I wanna know something about solid waste cost of the, excuse me, of the million-dollar tax revenue. I did the math, you know, 727 homes, if they average 700 or 650, that gets you to $500 million in tax base. Times the current tax rate, it's a million dollars, but we're not gonna keep it the current tax rate most likely. It's gonna drop to revenue neutral plus or minus a little bit, plus a little bit perhaps, which is takes that million down to 600 or 750. Again, I feel like I'm arguing, but I really, I'd like, I like us to consider it, and I respectfully ask us to do that, Mayor. Solid waste cost, when do we have to hire more police officers? What's our policy on response to calls? Now we're adding hundreds of homes nowhere near town center or police. Do we need a satellite police office in 10 years? Who funds that? We do. Are we gonna be asked to do park and rec services out there? Not today, maybe not two years, but in five years, potentially, if we're gonna have a whole new community of residents. It's an untested private sewer technology system. At some point, I thought we will, and hopefully we'll have someone come talk about that, as the manager just said. But we might be inheriting a neighborhood with a faulty sewer system down the road. Road resurfacing, they say they don't want it now, but they will want it in five years, 10 years. Does that affect redistricting of our council lines and all that? Because you're, now you're adding, you know, 1,500 people north of Emerald Lake. And, and so all of those things are why I wanna stop and not do it. You asked.
Oh, I, I disagree with most of them.
And that's totally great. I think we can write the, and, and we can vote to send the letter as it is. I would suggest if we send any letter, it's, it's less, it's not written by a congressman, number one. I get it. But it also suggests probably can be tweaked a little bit to give us the option not to annex after we do a study, which seems reasonable. So that, that's, that's my two cents.
And as I said, this is not, doesn't have anything to do with what, what's there. Having the capacity to review it.
Well, that's not what this says. This says the town would think it would be a very valuable asset. We want it to be added so that we certainly can do this.
I know, but when they pass the bill, it won't have any of that, that...
Oh, I know.
That language in it.
But then we're gonna lean back on this, Mayor, and say that we saw, we, we said that we wanna go with the proceedings that would allow this development to fall within the corporate limits of Stallings.
Do you have a rewording?
Yeah, I do. So I can submit that to, to the clerk, give that to the mayor. But I think the first paragraph's fine. I think the second paragraph's okay.
Yeah, I have no problem with the wording. I mean, you tweak it all you want.
Currently, the town is unable to, instead of annex, because I don't wanna annex today, currently the town is unable to consider the annexation without legislative approval. The town feels like this, instead of would be an asset, may be a very valuable asset considering the tax base that will be generated. So we just request allowing the, a bill adding the annex, satellite annex to be lifted in order to consider whether to move forward. Little things like that. I just don't wanna sign this because it presupposes, I think, that we want to do this. I don't think we should, by the way, based on what I know now, and those costs that are putting out in the future for some future town council to pay. Given that I know that's revenue, I know those would be great homes. revenue, I know those would be great homes, but it stretches our town into an even more strange shape and service area for our community, so. That's all I wanna say on that.
Being the businessman that I am, thinking of Stallings as a business, we need to generate revenue.
Which is in our small-area plans around the hospital, small-area plans around the independent, small-area plan around town center. That's how you...
That's eight, ten years away.
Well...
We don't have any sewer, right?
These costs, well...
We don't have any sewer. It's eight to ten years away. To generate, now, we can generate seven hundred, six hundred thousand dollars.
Short-term revenue potentially for long-term cost. It's not a, it's not a new argument that sprawl and, and buying and accessing single-family family homes is bad public policy generally, and that's why I don't wanna presuppose that it is. It could be the exception, but generally, and you've heard this, anytime you go to government classes, sprawl, single-family, it costs to serve residents. Our town economic development policy, which we all endorse, says we need to be moving toward eighty, twenty residential, commercial. This shoots that out the window, and it, we didn't just do that to pick those numbers. We did that, because that's how you build a town with commercial development, and that's what I'm arguing for. Fixed-use commercial development has been part of this town's fabric for the last decade now, as we've been doing small-area plans, and we've seen evidence that Bailey Mills, Stone Creek have more than ten times their value, up to ten times their value, just in this fact, once they've been completed. More of that keeps the police district closer, instead of having to go out to the, what is now the country. Do we need to add more officers, more personnel? That's going up fourteen percent a year in the future? These are things we ought to talk about before just saying we want to do this.
On my classes, with my city planning degree, sprawl was never talked about in a town the size of Stallings. You're comparing us to Charlotte, Chicago, and New York that, that has a problem with sprawl.
But your, your classes have talked about...
This is, this is, this is a half a mile away from our...
Yeah, but your classes have also talked about how residential development doesn't play.
Yeah, so where are we gonna put commercial? I mean, we're...
In our small-area plans.
Yeah, well, in all the, in all the areas that we talked about, we talked about tonight, they were talking about, you know, we don't have a lot of land left to develop, so I don't think we have something that's gonna bring in that much kind of revenue. Well, plus...
Three Bailey Mills projects would bring in six hundred million dollars. We just saw what it did. I'm, I'm not gonna argue with you, Mayor.
Well, I'm not either, but we're discussing it, so, you know, you had an opinion, I got an opinion, so, but it's, sewer's eight to ten years away.
I'm very interested in the private package plants.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we...
This would be a great thing.
Yeah, you know, if the Hilton Hotels put them on their property, they gotta be good. So, I was hoping we'd have the presentation from Kevin by now, but he'll probably be here on the twenty-fourth if we, so we can learn more about it. But, yeah, let's change the wording on this. All, all I'm asking for is us to have the chance to look at this piece of property.
I agree. Hundred percent. Hundred percent.
We're gonna change the wording. Can we get specific, instead of saying a few hundred yards, to saying the exact mileage?
I don't know if it's a half mile. I saw a few hundred yards.
But a few hundred yards is pretty vague. That's a...
So, yeah, submit your wording to Aaron. Aaron, if you could send it out to Melanie and Aaron, and Melanie, if you could review it, and then make sure we're not violating any laws about sharing stuff in, with any ... I don't wanna wait till the twenty-fourth to bring this back. I wanna get it to council. Dean's already missed the February eleventh deadline.
No, I think it's wise to get the option to, so I just, I didn't want it to be a foregone thing.
All right.
Thank you.
Any comments from this side of the desk? Sure.
I'm sure.
All righty.
We're past my bedtime, man. We're, I'm starting to zone out over here.
There we go. That'll do it. Motion to adjourn.
Mayor, if I may, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Nah, twenty seconds. I don't know if we're gonna have all the county data back, and I don't know how, until we get that data back, how productive our March, the twenty-fourth budget meeting would be.
Right, you were gonna push it back then.
Is that okay if we push it back? I just wanted to confirm that.
Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, push it.
Okay, and I'll, I'll...
Let's get some real numbers.
Yeah, sounds good, and I'll, I'll coordinate with the mayor once we do that, to set up a, a time. I know Mr. Shong's got some backed up, backed up subcommittee meetings he needs to have, so it'll be a great use for him, too, so.